The February 3, 2014 meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners will come to order. Would you stand with me for a brief prayer and then join us for the Pledge of Believers? Heavenly Father, we gather this morning to make decisions that will impact the lives of hundreds of thousands of citizens. We pray that you keep our hearts clear and our minds focused as we make these decisions, and let us make the best decisions that we can based on the information that we have. We pray for the safety of all those who daily enter situations that may be difficult to protect the rest of us. We pray for the families of all of our workers and for all of those people that are here as citizens in Cumberland County. Thank you for all that you have done for us and will continue to do for us, and let us know always and have faith in the fact that there is a higher power. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Believers to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business is to recognize a retired county employee, and that is going to be done by Commissioner Ed Melvin, who is a member of the Cumberland County Department of Social Services Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an honor and a privilege this morning, along with the rest of the Board of Commissioners, to recognize Violet Baker Johnson, who has been with Department of Social Services for 32 years. That is a great honor to serve the people of this county for that many years and the clients that needed the help that the Department of Social Services gives. We'd like for you to come up, along with Ms. Brenda Jackson, the Director. And Ms. Jackson, would you like to say a few words about her?
We do enjoy the years you were with Social Services. Violet worked in our Income Maintenance Division and did a fantastic job determining eligibility for the public assistance programs for our citizens. She always had such a wonderful attitude. When I came to Social Services, I was just so excited because Violet was one of those people that I could always count on for that bright smile. Providing great customer service and determining eligibility for our citizens is one of her core values. And Violet, we just want to thank you for your service to us.
Coming around with that picture. I'd like to present to Violet Baker Johnson, Cumberland County Department of Social Services, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, July 30, 1979, August 17, 1993, April 1, 1996, to November 1, 2013, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, February 3, 2014.
Thank you very much. has a moment here. But you've done a good job, and we're glad to have had you as a part of our Cumberland County family.
Thank you so much.
You feel better now?
Pleasure.
All right. Now, there are some changes, I believe, to the agenda. Mr. Martin?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I would ask you to consider a change to Item 2C, which was a proposed extension of the tax listing period as a result of the inclement weather we had last week. And I would like to actually amend that request with the recommendation of the Tax Administrator, Mr. Donaldson, from February 5 to actually February 10, which is Monday of next week at 5:00 p.m., the end of the business on February 10. That's the only change I'm aware of.
All right, that's Item C.
2C.
2C. All right, and to the listening audience, we are extending the listing period for taxpayers until Monday, February 10 because of inclement weather last year.
I was going to say...
Last week. Seems like it snowed for two months, I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda with the change. Those in favor? Item 3.
2.
There's 2.
That wasn't a consent, we just approved the agenda.
My motion would intend just to add that February 10 to 2C.
All right, we added February 10 as Item 2C. Let me go back. Have we approved the agenda? I'll take another motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have discussion on the motion, Item 21. Mr. Keith?
Yes, Ms. Cannon or Ms. Carter-Daly, either one, this has to do with the rebate on the employee pharmacy?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that when we went down this path with the employee pharmacy, we believed there would be substantial savings. As I look at this now, it looks like we are realizing some of those savings through rebates?
Yes, sir. On certain purchases of pharmaceuticals, we do receive rebates from the insurance company, and we were not sure at the beginning of the budget year as to the volume. So now we're appropriating or recognizing $750,000, and we believe that will be the amount through June 30.
And we anticipated saving almost a million dollars with the employee pharmacy. Are there other savings that we've realized in the past year since we've been working that way?
Last year, it was open for a partial year, and it was about a half a million in savings. So Mark Browder with Mark III Brokerage will be here at the March Finance Committee meeting, and we'll discuss pharmacy savings and also as well as the clinic operation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cannon. With that, I offer motion to approve consent agenda, including Item L1.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item 3. Ms. Brenda Jackson, DSS Director, shoulders like Atlas to hold up all these problems, these concerns, these concerns that have come to you over the last few months.
Good morning, good morning. I have with me this morning Heather Skeens, our Deputy Director, who oversees the day-to-day operations of our core services to include economic services that covers our public assistance programs. And I want to thank her for being here. We will try to be as brief as possible as we share this very complicated situation and complicated matters, so feel free to ask us any questions, and we'll try to answer them to the best of our abilities, even though we still have an awful lot of unknowns. So with that said, in trying to stay brief, I will try to succinctly kind of set the tone in terms of where we've been and where we are. If you remember back in August, I came before you to give a briefing on work support strategies that included all of the various things going on, including NCFAST and ePass. NCFAST and ePass are the new automated systems in which we determine eligibility for the public assistance programs to include Medicaid, food stamps, work first, childcare, and a list of others. Those are the major categories of public assistance. It also is the entry point in which citizens will and can apply online through an electronic application for services, and those applications will be transmitted to us through these two systems. Without a doubt, I think everybody knows that we've had major challenges, not only in Cumberland County but also statewide. The new system began rolling out for us, this total package of this systems, and the systems, because there's several systems, started rolling out to us in December, November, December of 2012. And initially, like any other system, we faced challenges that caused us to be in a backlog in terms of being able to provide services to citizens in a timely manner. It started out in our Food and Nutrition Program, which is commonly known as food stamps. Things started to level out, things were getting a lot better, we were processing cases, we were almost caught up. And in July 2013, the state enhanced the systems to start looking at those things we would have to do around the Affordable Care Act and changes coming down the pipe to us for the Medicaid program. And we started to experience additional backlog, which means what we had worked to catch up on was now getting further behind. I came before you, and we talked about and gave the picture of all of these different things. We talked about work support strategies, we talked about ePass, we talked about the Affordable Care Act, and our mandates around Medicaid. And what I share with you, and I hope that you remember, is that PowerPoint slide around the perfect storm. And we talked about all these things coming together at the same time. And if you remember on that slide, there was a black cloud, and that cloud was the unknowns, those things we didn't know about that was going to come. And we've had several unknowns over the last several months, one being the federal shutdown in October. We did not want to relive that again, do we? And the issues that that impacted in terms of having to freeze hiring, having to look at our eligibility programs because those programs were at risk, just a lot of issues that that brought around the federal shutdown. And if that was not enough, all of us have heard about USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, which is the federal administrator of the food stamps program. They have issued a mandate to the state that we have all food stamp cases, applications, and recertifications up to date by February 10. This means for us about 1,766 cases in Cumberland County. And if that was not enough, and this unknown of these black clouds, we had inclement weather last week, two and a half days of the agency closing. And we clearly understand why the agency had to be closed. We definitely want to make sure that citizens and employees can safely get to work, but it did also impact productivity. And we continue to have problems with NCFAST, and it's not, and we can point a lot of fingers and we can place a lot of blame, but there's a lot going on. This is a complicated system. It's complicated for the state, it's complicated for our employees, they're having to learn a completely new system. And so with that said, we're doing the very, very best we can with what we have, and staff has done a fantastic job. I know for our citizens, it's been absolutely difficult for them, and we definitely understand or are very sensitive to that. I will tell you that in terms of the current cases, we are required to do by USDA mandate to do recertifications every six months on those cases. USDA expects that we will look at those cases a month prior to the issuance date, and they have various issuance dates during the month. We have not met that mandate, however, we have been able to process those cases before the issuance dates. That means a couple of days before the issuance dates, in that it would not impact citizens. So hopefully you're not getting the number of phone calls you were getting back in 2012 because we are getting citizens their benefits, those ongoing cases before their issuance date, so their benefits are on their card. However, that does not meet USDA mandates. And so at least we're not seeing huge numbers of citizens who are not receiving their benefits. And as far as the applications, that's where we see the major part of our backlog, and there are those people that are applying for benefits, either for the first time or reapplying, that we're seeing the largest numbers, and we're working on those. I will tell you during the inclement weather, we became very, very creative. We sent 30 of our best income maintenance caseworkers home on Tuesday afternoon when we closed at 1:00 with laptops, because this is a web-based system, and they worked from home. We also worked on Saturday, we also worked yesterday. I think this is the first time in my six years here that we've ever worked on a Sunday other than during disaster times. And so staff have been vigilant, they've been dedicated, they've been committed. We've gotten that number of 1,766 cases down to 876 cases. On last week, I sent an email to the state and our copy county management on it and Social Services Board, giving them a heads up that two and a half days of closure would impact our productivity and could impact our ability to meet this federal deadline. They have responded, and they will be in this county probably the latter part of the week. I did talk with them on yesterday and confirmed our need for state assistance to get this work done, just as a precautionary measure. We are going to work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Staff are tired, they're exhausted, they're worn. But we've decided, instead of having all of this overtime, to divide the staff into four shifts, so they're only working eight-hour shifts, but we have somebody working in NCFAST the entire time, is up and operating. I want to thank you, I want to thank especially county management, they have been so very, very supportive, and of course, the Social Services Board for your support. Our community partners, we could not do it without them in terms of their help in filling the gap that we have not been able to do, the work that we're required to do. So with that said, I went through that briefly, Commissioner Council, you told me to keep it down to two minutes, so I think I maybe did that. We will entertain any questions.
Item... Did you raise your hand? We've got two. I'm going to recognize Mr. Edge, Mr. Melvin, and then me.
Brenda, first of all, I have to say thank you to you and your staff for the excellent customer service that you have been providing. It's obvious from your remarks that you're going over and beyond the call of duty to try to accommodate our customers, our citizens, and we appreciate that. It goes right along with our core values. The second thing, and I think this needs some clarification perhaps, this is almost like an unfunded mandate, is it not?
That's correct.
Because we do not get, in other words, Cumberland County is funding the process of these applications. It's a mandate from the federal government, but we do not get any money from them to administer this program. Is that correct?
We receive 50% federal reimbursement, and that's the $80 million that the USDA is threatening to withhold, and then 50% is county, so there's no state dollars in the administration of our public assistance programs.
So that is something I think a lot of the public doesn't realize, that some of those unfunded mandates has pushed down either from state government or federal government to the local level. And I think it's just, I just want to make the public aware of that. Thank you, Dr. Counsel.
Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Edge kind of summed up what I was going to say also. You're serving on that board and watching what the Brenda Jackson, our DSS Director, and our staff and employees and what they've done over the weekend. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
The ingenuity of our county employees never fails to amaze me, and what you have done to try to, and your department, to try to meet this crisis, is nothing less than fantastic. I was wondering whether or not we needed any kind of resolution to send to the state or the federal government that is threatening to shut down because of the inclement weather, to shut us down. And I was wondering whether or not of the 300, did I not read that they had 300 state employees assigned to work with this department?
We have, it's about, for us, it's only five state employees that are assisting us. Four are actually helping to process applications, and then we have some folks there for technical support, because we still, of these mandated cases, we still have cases we can't get through the system, and so they're trying to work through those kinks to get those cases through. We do anticipate this week that we will have more state staff present. We also have had the pleasure of having some counties who've come forth to help us. During disaster food stamps, we have been able to send our staff to other counties to help, and those counties have graciously called to return the favor to Cumberland County. And so I started getting phone calls yesterday from other DSS Directors. It's good to have good relations, it pays off in the end, that are going to come and help us as well.
Is there anything that we as this board can do to help?
I don't think the state would object to having something from the Board of Commissioners that really stresses the inclement weather, because that really did impact us. I think without that, we would be in much better shape today, because we have over 100 and some staff that could help do this work, but when they can't be online, then that would help. So I'm sure that the state would really appreciate having something to at least express your concerns about the inclement weather and the impact on productivity.
All right, with permission of the Board, let me ask your feeling about trusting me and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Shutt to come up with such a resolution to send to the state?
Need a motion?
I think we need a motion.
I'll move that we do that.
Second.
You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Council, Faircloth, Keith, and King, voting in opposition. Commissioner Evans.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for all that you continue to do, and we'll try to get that resolution as quickly as possible.
We appreciate it, and just to bring it, it is truly a team effort. I'm just a representative of some really good folks behind me doing some really good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. King, then, Mr. Evans?
James, the employees are doing this overtime work and all that. Are they getting any kind of comp time?
I'm sure they're getting at least comp time, is that right?
Yes, for voluntary time where they volunteer to work late, we give comp time. When we mandate them to work, we have enough money in our budget to compensate.
Okay, okay. Good.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to explain my vote against, and the reason it was against, Madam Chair, you are so involved in so many activities as far as with the city of Fayetteville and trying to make things happen, and with the school system and all of this, I just thought that it would be good if we had our vice chair to serve in that capacity, to leave you some room to handle what you have to handle. That was my reason against it, not that you weren't capable of doing it, but that was my reason for it. So I just wanted to explain that.
That was, that was nice.
It's the truth.
Along with Mr., even though the motion has passed...
Yes.
This...
No, no.
Unanimous?
No.
All right, thank you. Can we revoke so it can be unanimous now? Or does it need to be unanimous? It doesn't need to be unanimous, we understand.
Okay.
It'll be a team effort, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I say thank you one more time...
Hi, Doug.
You know we appreciate it.
We appreciate the thank yous.
But we give you comp time, I don't know how in the world you're going to be able to even use it, the comp time, because there's so much to do, and it is that cloud, and I don't feel that, the cloud already dumped snow last week, and we don't know what other clouds are coming, so we empathize with you and sympathize with you, and it is just a thank you.
Thank you.
I won't say it anymore.
We appreciate it.
Good morning. I'm here to give you an update since our last update on November 4 on progress made with the strategic plan by our departments. I'm just, in your agenda packet, you have a more detailed report, so this morning I'm just going to hit on some of the highlights for the five goals. Under ensure a safe and healthy community, this morning at 11:00, you will have a ribbon cutting for the detention center expansion. Last week, on January 27, the Community Mental Health Center at Cape Fear Valley opened. They moved out of the facility at 109 Bradford Avenue where they were located, and now they're at Roxy Avenue. The Crisis Evaluation Service that will be offered through the center is expected to begin in early February. The Sheriff's Office received accreditation again, and the sobriety court grant has been received, and a grant has been, is being sought for Veterans Treatment Accord. You approved the county's match for that grant. Under goal two, providing adequate infrastructure, Bragg Estates Water and Sewer District has been created, as a board you created that. A funding application has been sent to USDA for Overheals Park Water and Sewer District for a sewer project there. Our Information Services Department has completed Phase Two of the telecommunications plan, and they are finalizing the three-year technology plan. And now that the Community Mental Health Center has moved out of the 109 Bradford Avenue, renovations can begin at that facility, which will allow child support to spread out more in that building and provide their clients with a little more privacy. Goal three, promoting economic development. Our county planning department is coordinating with the city of Fayetteville planning on the Crown Coliseum Tourism Overlay Plan. You approved the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, and our planning department is now, has branched out into the Grays Creek area and working on that land use plan. This month, there will be two job fairs. The first will be March 12, I'm sorry, in March, there will be two job fairs. The first one will be March 12, that will be at Headquarters Library on Maiden Lane, and then March 27 at the Crown Expo Center. Department of Social Services, their Work First Program will have the March to Work Job Fair. And then Cooperative Extension is completing the farmers' market feasibility study. Those results will be presented on February 24, and we encourage the public to go online to our website, there's a link available there, where they are seeking feedback from the public. It's a very short survey, about 10 questions, so the public can have additional input on that. Goal four is our educate and inform and engage our citizens and employees and other governing bodies. Today, we are live streaming the meeting, so we're very excited about that. Our meetings continue to be broadcast live on Channel 5, Time Warner Channel 5, but now those who don't have Time Warner Cable but have internet access can watch your meetings live. The Appointed Boards Information Session will be held tomorrow night, February 4, and our next session of the Citizens Academy will run March 18 through May 6. We are accepting applications for that now, and so citizens can go online to apply. The Commissioners are continuing their partnership with the city and the chamber for the federal advocacy program. On February 18, you will be having a workshop, the different departments from both city and county and the chamber will be meeting to work on the federal legislative agenda. Then three Commissioners are serving on the Fayetteville Cumberland County Liaison Committee. And then our fifth goal is employing motivated professional and well-trained personnel. The county has contracted with Frank The county has contracted with Frank Horton Associates for the Employee Assistant Program Services. Our new Assistant County Manager, Quinta McFatter, is here. He started back in January. Our Library Director, Jody Rishersher, received state honor as Library Director of the Year and our Deputy Health Director, Rod Jenkins, was awarded an award from the North Carolina Public Health Association for Outstanding Contributions to Social Work and Public Health. As Ms. Jackson just presented, our DSS has been very busy working on the NC FAST and their Economic Services Section did not participate in the classification study earlier in the year, but they are doing that this month and that will be implemented in May. And then the SSS has also received a grant covering permanency roundtable training for the children's services staff. And that is a very quick overview of the progress made since your last report on November 4th. If I could just get one more plug in for our Citizens Academy, March 18th through May 6th, the application is available online. Do you have any questions?
And which academy are we participating in tomorrow?
That is the Appointed Boards, members of the 37 Appointed Boards that you appoint citizens to serve on. That is part of our regularly scheduled information sessions where they come in and get an overview of county government and we also encourage them to sign up for Citizens Academy. It's part of their orientation process.
They really are excited about that. I can remember getting calls after the first one and some people were going off the board, but they were interested in learning more. I think that was started by, during last year.
Sally, the joint planning relationship with the, at the Crown Coliseum, how did that come about and how's it working out so far?
I think that was brought before the Planning Board. Commissioner Keith was scheduled and brought that before the, I'm sorry, the, was it Policy Committee and our Planning Director, Tom Lloyd, was tasked with coordinating with the city's planning to come and work on those amendments and then take it before the respective boards who will be affected by that and then it will come to the Commissioners for final approval.
So it will come back to us before?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Evans?
Quick question. I noticed that there were a couple of grants by DSS and I'm just curious and I probably should know this, but who prepared those grants for DSS?
And I'll ask Ms. Jackson to respond to that.
Ms. King, come to the podium, please, thank you.
We partner with Casey Foundation, so ourselves and Grant Writer at Casey prepare the grants and submit them.
Okay, so pretty much DSS is involved greatly and preparing the grants, that's going to bring in funds to help our citizens here in Cumberland County.
Yes.
Good deal, good deal, thank you. Thank you so much, your work.
Are there other comments? If not, thank you for this update. It is a comprehensive updating, it shows that our departments are still involved and it's a good process. Mr. Edge started. Mr. Manager?
Item five.
Item five.
Item five is consideration of a voice interoperability plan for emergency responders, better known as Viper. And Mr. Beeman's here to give you that presentation. Mr. Beeman is the Emergency Services Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Management Team and Staff. It's been some time, or actually the first time I'm here before you, to talk about the Viper system and the P-25 and to give you an update. Go back in history, initially, back in 2009, 2010, the county sought assistance in communication. Prior to that time, communication was limited at best within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fayetteville. Law enforcement was utilizing their communication system. So at that point, the state of North Carolina created through the North Carolina Highway Patrol, the Viper system, as the manager just pointed out, is the voice interoperability plan for emergency responders. That system created a network across the state of North Carolina, better known also as the 800 megahertz system that I'm sure many of you have heard or spoke, or heard, spoken about in the various news agencies. This system, upon total build-out, will allow the emergency services throughout the state to communicate freely and readily in most any emergency situation. 800 megahertz system is not the only system that is being utilized by the various emergency responding agencies. There are 700 megahertz systems and then there are those agencies that are not even involving themselves with the Viper system who have a VHF direct communication system. But in Cumberland County, we are fortunate to be on the Viper system and also we are very fortunate to be connected through what is called a Smart Zone, which is computer software that is utilized, but more particularly, we are in a hardwired situation, meaning that there are three agencies in the state of North Carolina that are literally hardwired that assist us in communicating readily from our communications center, which is a direct line connected through fiber through the backbone of the Viper system in Raleigh. We are also utilizing approximately eight towers in this communication system that are networked surrounding in our area and community that assist all the responders for full coverage, but the coverage is within that study that was done back in 2008 and nine of 95% street coverage. And that is the key, that currently 95% of all communication is covered through the Viper system, through the networking of the various towers. Might also point out that through that networking, there is no cost to Cumberland County and the communications. Those systems are maintained by the North Carolina Viper System, North Carolina Highway Patrol, and that manager of that system is a gentleman by the name of Mike Hodgson. We are currently endeavoring in moving forward in what's called P-25 and the P standing for Project 25. That is a software upgrade through all the communications centers whereby we will be then allowed to open the architecture of communication among the communication systems broadband sense that we will then free up what is called radio IDs. Prior to this upgrade of P-25, there was a limitation, quickly noted by the state, as to the number of radios that could function on the system. P-25 will open that up and will allow all of the various users in the emergency services, public safety, that will be allowed to communicate readily and freely on the system. P-25 was targeted in four prime areas. One was to allow for effective, efficient, and reliable inter-agency communication, ensure competition in the system lifecycle, provide user-friendly environment, and to improve the radio spectrum efficiency, which is what I just alluded to, in broadening that spectrum for efficiencies throughout the agencies. We are very fortunate that we continue to have good relationship with our Viper Director and Manager at the State Highway Patrol. And also, just to give you an update on where we are on the P-25 acquisition and process the bids have been received and are now being reviewed by our consultant, MCP, and they will be letting us know within the next two weeks as to the results of the bids. And followed with that is that it has to be for Cumberland County Communication to have that P-25 upgrade completed by April 30th. And the state of North Carolina Viper system is looking at a timeline of June to July as to the cut-over on the new P-25 system as part of the Viper radio. Are there any questions?
I'm sure there are questions. I don't know which, you had to hand it first.
I can go with any time.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead.
Randy, which agencies, law enforcement, first responders, in Cumberland County currently are using the Viper system?
Currently, all of our volunteer fire services, 20. Currently, through Cape Fear Valley Emergency Services, ambulance service, emergency medical services are utilizing Viper, and Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, the city or town of Spring Lake, and the town of Hope Mills.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a technical person, but that means they can all communicate together seamlessly if they're all on the Viper system?
With, yes, sir.
I heard a hesitation.
The hesitation is, is that they have various banks within their communication system, but yes, they can communicate freely. It may be simply a turning of the dial to their frequency, but they all can speak among themselves, yes, sir.
And I heard you say 95% coverage in the county? Is that what you're getting?
95% street coverage.
Street, uh, when you say street coverage, okay, does that different than overall coverage?
Here's, here's where your differentials are. In high-density buildings, those that have a lot of concrete and steel structures, the radio frequency is diminished and so then, and as an example, in the EOC that we currently have in the basement over in the law enforcement center, we created, we enhanced that through a BDA, a biodirectional antenna. Your law, your confinement center also has a BDA system for those officers when they respond or bringing individuals to that facility, they have a BDA which actually boosts the signal. Your high-density buildings and therefore that 5% differential would be because of high-density buildings.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking all this is I'm sure you're aware, as the county emergency service, the city of Fayetteville has chosen to go with a different platform and communication system and it just seems, it seems, I know that you don't have any call on what happens on there, but were you consulted prior to them going to that system? Because it would seem to me that in the safety of our citizens, that seamless communication is paramount.
One of the good things, and yes, I was, and we did speak with the city and Mr. Chandler, who is specifically assigned the upgrade of their system, and they are using the core system with Durham, County of Durham, and that will allow them to use their system through 800 megahertz independent from the North Carolina Highway Patrol Viper system. However, what we have done as a partnering with the P-25 upgrade is that we, in working with the city, have their actual channels within our communications center. So therefore, we can seamlessly communicate with the city enforcement and those various agencies. And also with that, all of our current radios that are in the county vehicles, Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, Spring Lake, Hope Mills, those entities already have programmed in their mobile radios, city of Fayetteville frequencies. So it is very interoperable.
Okay, thank you.
He asked a question I wanted to ask. What is the difference in cost? Suppose I was here, a lot of us were here whenever we discussed this in detail and decided to go with the Viper system and that's why, well, we decided, the decision was made.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why we went that way and at that time, it was to be a county-wide system. Now, how much money would we spend to, to go with the Durham system?
To go with the Durham system, rough estimates would entail us revamping our communication network, our backbone, and those estimates are approximately 1.2 to 2.1 million dollars. Along with, that would be your startup cost or your actual beginning cost and then there would be a yet-to-determined fee or stipend or maintenance fee that would be included in maintaining that communication equipment.
All right. Along with the change of equipment, well, the other municipalities who have chosen to go along with us would also have to change.
They would either change or they would have to go independently with a separate communication system.
How much does the, compared to that system, how much does the Viper system cost us?
Currently, there are no expenditures for utilizing the Viper system. The only expenditure that we are addressing currently is upgrading to the P-25 at our communications center, but there are no ongoing reoccurring expenditures so far as maintenance of the system.
Excuse me, it's free?
At this time, yes, ma'am.
It's free to any one who wants to use it in North Carolina?
Based on emergency service responders, that would be your law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical, it is not open to the general public.
No, I know, I can't get.
Okay, I'm sorry. But currently?
But it's free.
Currently, there are, yes, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness gracious. I didn't realize it was completely free. Hmm.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Beeman mentioned that we're in the process with the help of an outside consultant to determine what our needs are and help us with the competitiveness of securing some equipment that will make us P-25 compatible. Can you speak just a moment to that, Randy? Do you have a general ballpark about what the range of those prices may, may be?
I do, and thank you.
Not specifically, but give us a range, not a final number.
A range that we're looking at currently in our upgrade to the P-25 is between a half a million to just shy of a million dollars in that upgrade. The beauty of that is, is that through our surcharge funds, our fees, that each and, each and all of us who have cellular phones, landlines, we're paying that surcharge per month and so we have been, through management's assistance, been able to take care of the projected costs. So therefore, those funds will be utilized in that acquisition through the surcharge monies.
All right. Before you spend, before we spend another penny, are you comfortable with the route that we chose in 2009 and 2010?
Absolutely.
And our citizens are safe?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'm sorry I had so many, but I just could, there were things I couldn't understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I refer to our county attorney, please, item six.
Yes, Madam Chair.
And I don't know what you need, you have to help me through these.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The memo that I provided in the agenda, I think, explains the situation fully. As you recall, at the public hearing on October 21st of last year, when the board considered the application of the precise properties in Tiger Swan for the firing range and agricultural use in case P-1345, there was what appeared to me to be some confusion in terms of what the application was. There was discussion at the public hearing by the attorney for the plaintiffs in the lawsuits had been pending about the language in the application. And I did not really at that time fully understand what it was, had not actually reviewed the application. But in going back and looking at this and discussing this with the planning staff, it's a, it's a real, it's really of no substance other than it probably does create confusion. And what has happened is, in, as y'all recall, in September of 2010, you had a very long quasi-judicial hearing that went on for hours that, on a zoning matter. And it was the board's desire after that to look at amending the, the planning ordinance to minimize those sorts of hearings. And what you actually did in April of 2011 was a major amendment to the zoning ordinance. And what you actually did in April of two thousand eleven was a, a major amendment to the zoning ordinance, which you did away with conditional use districts and conditional use permits, which was the quasi-judicial process, and went just to conditional zoning, which is a legislative process. Thus, you, you could get away from the quasi-judicial hearings. The applications that, that folks make, and I don't know how many conditional zoning applications have been. This may have been the first one, I'm not sure. But the language that was in the applications for the old conditional use districts and conditional use permits is the language that was retained in section seven of the application in the Tiger Swan, the Tiger Swan application. And that was the language that is no longer a part of our ordinance, except in a lim, in the limited circumstance of a special use permit issuance by the, or consideration by the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Commissioners no longer has the authority under the ordinance to even impose those requirements or consider those requirements. It, in, in talking with, with planning staff, they changed the application, the wording in the application in some instances, but, but that language in, in section seven was just left in the application, form application, by oversight. It, it should have been cleaned up, and it, I think it has been cleaned up now. But in any event, that was, I think, some of the confusion, at least that I, I had from, from hearing Ms. Curran's discussion of this and in my earlier discussions with it, because what she was, what she was saying to me didn't make sense from the ordinance. But after realizing what was going on in the, in the application, it did make sense. And that, in fairness, and, and I, I think you're aware, pretty much the same plaintiffs that have filed the first two lawsuits in this zoning matter have filed a third lawsuit. And this is really the, one of the big issues in, in the third lawsuit. And in fairness to those plaintiffs, I mean, I, I've asked the board to reconsider that, that action taken in October, to, to clarify for the record whether the board really intended that the, the special use conditions be made applicable to Tiger Swan or did not. Again, you don't have the authority under the ordinance to do it, and it's just really more a matter of clarifying the record for this judicial process than anything else. But I've, I've recommended and asked and requesting that you do that to try to minimize the, the litigation that, that this is going to continue in this matter, apparently. My recommendation was that the, and let me make it clear. It's my understanding, based on discussions with planning staff, what was presented in my, at the planning board and from, and Tiger Swan's folks themselves, there was never any intent by anyone that those requirements be made subject to that application. It, it was just an oversight that the language was left in the applic, form application. Tiger Swan just filled out the form application that was provided to them. And I guess it was provided to anybody that, that had, was seeking a conditional use or a conditional zoning at, up until that time. And I, and again, I'm not sure that there even have been anymore. But my recommendation is for the board to reconsider its action that was taken in October. And the, the technical distinction between reconsidering it and just acting on it is that if, if it's actually a reconsideration, it's cleaner in the sense that you're going back and, and wiping out the action from October and redoing it. That's what, that's what the motion to reconsider is for. Under the board's rules, adopted rules, you would have to suspend your rules in order to make a motion to reconsideration, because under your adopted rules, you can only make a motion for reconsideration at the same meeting at which the motion or the action that you're wishing to reconsider was taken. Obviously, this was taken in October, and I'm requesting and recommending that you do this now. If, if the board, if there is not five votes to suspend the rules, the Board of Commissioners, by majority vote, can continue and do this. It's just not as clean, but it, it can be done. A majority of the Board of Commissioners can take any action. So the, the substantive motions that I'm asking, and, and then a, a second matter that's been, that's kind of raising this lawsuit, is whether or not the board really properly adopted a consistency and reasonableness statement when it considered this. The consistency and reasonable statement was provided in the minutes from the planning board that was in your agenda package. It was provided in the memo and stated by the planning director at the presentation on October twenty-first. And it was adopted, and, and the minutes were approved unanimously for, for the adoption of that consistency and reasonable statement. But, but technically, that was adopted prior to your taking action. The record, it's not at all clear on that. The, the board discussed it, I mean, some board members discussed various components of the consistency and reasonable statement, and there was a great, a great deal. But, but as far as there, there being a separate motion, there was not. And I, and I clearly should have advised the board to have made that second motion, the earlier motion, in, in this, in this matter. And that, that was my, my oversight in not doing so. And that's another reason that I'm requesting that the board, recommending and requesting the board to reconsider this. But the memo that I have provided is, lays out, if you do this the way I'm requesting you do it, which is to do it with reconsideration, it will take the two procedural motions. If there are not five votes to suspend your rules, then the way that the motions are stated that I'm recommending that you consider will suffice. And you, you can still do that. If they pass by a four-three vote, you will, it'll be a little messier because you still, you haven't wiped out the action you took in October, the, on October the twenty-first, but you, I, I think will have clarified the record by taking this action. And the reason this is significant is because litigation is expensive. I mean, we have been, we have been to the North Carolina Supreme Court one time, North Carolina Court of Appeals twice. We're now in Superior Court and for the Board of Adjustment. This just goes on and on and on. And if there's, I'm really recommending the board to take this action, to clarify this record, to, to try to minimize that. And it's not just for the counties, from the counties' perspective, but from the, from the litigants in this too, who are bearing the expense of this. So that, that's my, my recommendation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Keith.
Yes. Mr. Mor, Mr. Morfield, just for clarification. The procedural motion to reconsider must be adopted by seventy-five percent or five of the seven county commissioners. If, if that is not, if that procedural motion to reconsider does not pass with five, you can still go down to the substantive motion and treat it as a new item, and it only takes a simple majority.
That's correct, but just, it's a correction. It's, the, the procedural motion for suspension of rules is what takes five votes.
Right.
You, you, the, the reconsideration can be, if you, if you make that motion, it can pass on four votes.
Okay, so the idea of just relooking at it takes five. And if that doesn't pass, we can treat this as a new.
That's correct.
As a new item, and it just causes a lot of legal work on your part.
And, and I, and I will, I say, it's, when I say it doesn't, when you say it doesn't cause a lot of legal problems, as long as you ratify and confirm the decision you made, you cannot change your decision without going forward with another public hearing and stuff. But you can ratify and confirm the decision you've already made without another public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Attorney, I must, I must be totally honest with you. What, what you've done has just confused the heck out of me here. I understand what Commissioner Keith has asked, and I'm glad he asked that question. At one point, you mentioned suspension. Uh, go into detail about that.
Under your, what I'm asking you to do is to reconsider this matter. And, and the significance of that, the legal significance of that is, if you make it, if you pass a motion to reconsider it, you essentially wipe out the action in October, and it's one decision. And that's why I'm asking that you reconsider it.
So what if we vote to suspend?
Okay. And, but you can't make, nobody can make a motion to reconsider under your adopted rules, because under your adopted rules, a motion to reconsider can only be made in the same, would have to be made on October twenty-first. So the motion under your rules that, that has to be made first is a motion to suspend your rules. That's what takes five votes. It, it's not a motion, not the motion to reconsider, or not the motion to, 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 to take action, but the, actually, just the, the courtesy to allow the board to reconsider this takes five votes. And, and then, and after that point, it's, it's, it's a majority vote.
Okay. Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
What if a motion was made to table any action on this until a matter of clarity was done on this? Because I think what's happened now, this is just me saying this. What's happened now is there's a, a, a mass of confusion, a ball of confusion going on here with this. And we appreciate you helping us try to understand this, but it's something, something is not right. Something is not right. Something clearly isn't right, and I'm not understanding what it is. So if we tabled this vote today, if a motion is made to table this vote today, it would take, what, four votes, as a normal motion would take, correct?
A motion to table, yes, the matter, yes, sir.
Okay. And we bring it back at a later date. After further discussion, I don't want to drag this on, but what I want to do is want it to be fair for everyone involved, especially, especially Tiger Swan and the citizens who want this done correctly. Because what it sounds like to me now, we haven't done anything correctly, have we?
Yes. It, it probably wouldn't be prudent for me to, to advise you on that in open meeting, uh, Mr.
I mean, it's not, it's not an advisement, it's just a simple guess and no. We, we haven't done nothing correct, or we wouldn't be at this point now, would we? No.
There's a, you don't have the authority under your own, the ordinance you adopted by the amendments you made in April of two thousand and eleven to impose the requirements that are set out in section seven of the application. That's why I didn't really think it would be of any significance, after understanding what, what their issue was. However, it is, it has become a big point in, in the litigation that's now been filed on this. And, and the argument is that by putting that in the application, and, and you didn't make it clear at the, at the, when the action was taken about those, those conditions, because you don't have any authority to impose the conditions. Those conditions were placed in there because it was in a form that Tiger Swan hadn't used, because that's what was provided to it. Those conditions were left in there, well, they're not in conditions, they're requirements. They, they were left in there as, in, from the memo from planning staff, just by an oversight. Certain provisions of the form application were changed. This was just not changed and should have been, and has been now. And it, that's what creates the confusion. My, when, when you, when you talk about not doing anything right, what I'm trying to do is, is make it as right as possible now, because it is expensive to go to court, for these folks to go to court. And if, and if it's the board's intent that, that this really was not, you know, that they really didn't approve this, then this is the time to, to vote on it, because there was nothing from the discussion, or from the motion, or from the action that was taken to indicate that the board really intended that it was trying to violate its ordinance and make this a special use district instead of just conditional zoning. I mean, it, it was just clearly, I don't think the board members didn't even, even know it. I didn't know it at that time, that that was in the application, didn't, didn't understand the significance of it. I'm just trying, I'm, I'm recommending the board clarify the record so that we can move on with this.
Okay, so in clarifying the record, if you do not receive the five votes, it reverses back to the original, whatever it was, correct? Would that also include another public hearing for the citizens? Or are we doing something to circumvent having a public hearing, or what's going on?
Now, so the, the law is clear, and this is from the North Carolina Supreme Court on, on the requirement for a public hearing. You can reconsider an action in accordance with your rules. You can vote anytime by majority vote. When you're talking about a matter such as a zoning matter that requires a public hearing, as long as you are not substantially changing the outcome, and my recommendation is that you confirm and ratify the same result, then you don't have to have a public hearing. If there is some consideration on this board to now vote against this permit, then yes, you would have to have a public hearing.
That meaning, if you do not get the five votes needed, we would have to have a public hearing?
No, sir. If you don't get the five votes to suspend the rules, then, then my recommendation is the board just consider with these substantive motions just to take action on this, and the three motions that I have, that I've recommended. If those pass by a four to three vote, or a five to two vote, or by majority vote, they're done. And, and there will be no need, no, no legal need for a public hearing.
Second. Ms.
Okay, I think my, I think my understanding now is that if, if, if we vote to suspend the rules, then we just wipe out the previous action.
That's correct.
Start anew, basically.
Yes, sir.
And that removes a point of contention among the litigants.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Madam.
Mr. Keith.
As I understand this procedurally, that a, a person who voted in the affirmative has to make the motion to suspend the rules. Is that correct? So I, I'll make a motion right now to, to support the, to suspend the board's adopted rules.
And I second.
All right, you've heard the motion to suspend the rules. Are there questions or additional comments? Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans and Melvin.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a substantial motion that the board acknowledges it has considered the information provided in the memos. Go ahead, yes, sir.
The first, first motion, the second procedural motion to actually reconsider had to be made first.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. And I'd like to reconsider the action taken after the public hearing conducted on October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, in case number P one-three dash four-five.
Second.
All right, you've heard, heard the motion. Are there questions? If not, those in favor?
Wait, before, I do have a question.
Please.
The motion that Commissioner Keith just made, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm s- I'm sorry. I already called for the vote. I can't un-call for the vote, I don't think. Can I un-call for the vote after I have called for the vote?
I don't think you have a rule on that, so I think that'd be the chair's privilege.
My arm's getting tired.
Your arm is getting tired.
Yeah, and, and, and I hate to be a pain about this, but to me, it just appears that we are, we are acting real hastily on, on this matter. And, and I, well, wait, I mean, you can shake your head, no, I do not care. What I'm saying is, I do know that Tiger Swan, as I've been often reminded, that we approached them to, because we recruited them to come to us. And I just don't think it's fair to the citizens that are involved in this issue not to be given a chance to come back before us and to express their concerns regarding this. And, and maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I really don't think I am.
I, since I've been on this board, I'm not aware of this board recruiting Tiger Swan to come here.
But that's what I was told.
I don't know who told you that. I was on the board. I haven't missed a meeting that anything like that was brought up.
I did.
The Chamber of Commerce has recruited somebody, but this board has not recruited anybody.
We are a member, Mr. Evans. I did not deliberately try to.
I, I just, I just think that we're work, I just think that we're moving too fast, and I don't know why we're so anxious to get Tiger Swan here.
Madam Chair.
To do whatever it needs to be done.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call for the question. Thank you.
All right. The question has been called for. Those in favor of calling the question?
Is, was this the vote on Chairman Keith's motion?
The second procedural motion.
On the second motion.
All right, voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans and Melvin.
All right, and now we'll go back to the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the board acknowledges it has considered the information provided in the memos included with this agenda from the county attorney and the planning director with respect to the inclusion of the requirements formally applicable to the approval of conditional use districts in section seven of the application of Tiger Swan Incorporated. And it finds that those requirements stated in section seven are not required by the Cumberland County zoning ordinance and does not impose those requirements to its consideration of the rezoning request made by Tiger Swan Incorporated in case number P one-three dash four-five.
Second.
All right, you've heard the first motion, and there has been a second. Is there additional, are there additional questions? If not, those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans, Melvin and Faircloth.
All right. Mr. Keith?
Thank you. Rick, would you like for me to read the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the second subsidy's motion is in case number P one-three dash four-five. The board adopts the consistency and reasonableness statement presented by the planning director, Tom Lloyd, at the meeting held October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. And as restated in a memo from the county attorney, provided with the agenda specifically as follows. Subparagraph one. The request of A-one agricultural and the use as an outdoor firing range coupled with a continued farming in the subject property is consistent with the two thousand thirty growth vision plan and the growth strategy map, which designates the area where the subject property is located. property is located as rule, and also consistent with the mandated location criteria for agriculture as listed in the Land Use Policies Plan of the 2030 Growth Vision Plan." Subparagraph two, "The specific requested use of an outdoor firing range evidenced by the application site plan and supplemental documentation, along with the attached ordinance-related conditions, is reasonable as all the provisions lifted in the text amendment provided by the county commissioners on June 17th, 2013, including all other zoning ordinance standards for outdoor firing ranges, is met or exceeded." And, subparagraph three, "If developed according to its recommended plan, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety, as it is designed in construction to be consistent with the safety guidelines of the U.S. Department of Energy's range design criteria, as documented by a licensed professional engineer included with the application, and the range complex is in harmony with the area in which it is to be located."
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. Are there questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Charles.
Charles, Charles Evans.
Charles Evans, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I was listening to Commissioner Keith as he read everything that was in before him. We talked about safety in this. We talked about, and what he read, he talked about safety, I wrote it down here somewhere, but also the location and character and the use of where this is at. And clearly, there's a problem with all of that. And the point that I'm trying to make, I know you've made up your mind, and I, but I'm going to say it anyway. With that being said, clearly, there's a problem with the location and the use of where it's at. And what you're saying that is for, or we would not have had the number of citizens here complaining that night about that issue. So what I'm saying is, everything, not everything that was read, but a good portion of what was read by my colleague, Commissioner Keith, just a minute ago, contradicts what our citizens want in that particular area. And I just wanted to make that notation so that everyone would know that when you looked at it, you're overlooking a couple of lines that's very important to the citizens in which we serve. Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans, Melvin and Faircloth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the third substantive motive is that in case number P-13-45, the board ratifies and confirms its action taken on October 21st, 2013, to follow the recommendation of the joint planning board to approve A1/conditional zoning for the outdoor firing range and agricultural uses with conditions, and to specifically adopt and approve all of the planning board's findings of reasonableness and consistency with the LUP, and to impose the additional condition regarding hours of operation as consented to by the applicant.
Second.
Mr. Evans, you have a comment?
No.
All right, those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans, Melvin and Faircloth.
Item seven.
Madam Chair, I made that a separate item, although it's certainly related to the Tiger Swan issue, because it's a broader issue, but also just so that they would, to try to simplify things as much as possible. Again, one of the issues that continues to be raised is that this firing range is a vocational school. That determination was made by Superior Court Judge before the board adopted the regulations in June of this year for firing ranges. And under the definitions that's adopted, Tiger Swan is clearly a firing, Tiger Swan facility is clearly a firing range. However, again, in the interest of trying to minimize the litigation on this matter, I'm asking and recommending the board to request the planning board define, recommend a definition of vocational school for the zoning ordinance. That's not something you can do at this time, but we'll get that process initiated with the planning board if the board deems fit to do so.
All right, thank you.
We need a motion on that.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion, please.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion, recommend that a definition of vocational school in the zoning ordinance, to make it clear that outdoor firing range and vocational schools are intended to be separate and distinctive use.
Second. All right, we have a motion. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Council, Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans and Melvin.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Hopefully, this will make the process a little bit easier for everyone. Item eight, nominations to boards and committees.
Madam Chair.
Mr.?
I'd like to recommend Ernest Curry, who's completed his first term and is eligible for reappointment.
Thank you, one nomination.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Wilson Lacy to replace Don Porter, whose term is ending. And both of these individuals have been recommended by the nominating committee.
Do you have a nomination?
Yes, I have a nomination. I would like to make Attorney Mike Williford, please.
Attorney Mike Williford?
Yes.
Is there another nomination? All right, item.
Chair, okay, we don't have anything to do with these other reappointments, right? This is Mark Fessiri and Fred Chau.
No, we tried, that's the hospital.
That's the hospital. The hospital. Only two of them really.
So we select two.
We select two out of the three that have been nominated.
Madam Chair, you're not number nine yet?
Yes, I think I am.
I would like to recommend appointment of Eric Jones, reappointment of Eric Jones and Veronica Langston to the minimum housing appeals board.
Second. Those in favor, you've heard the nominees?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Is there any? There is no need for a closed session. I will take a motion, please. Do we, wait a minute, do we adjourn this meeting and then reconvene?
Actually, we need to recess this meeting.
Or recess this meeting?
We didn't handle it right on the agenda.
All right, we will now recess this meeting. I move that we recess this meeting, and we will un-recess it at 11 o'clock over at the detention center. Those in favor, I need a motion, second.
I move that we recess this meeting to the detention center ribbon cutting.
Second, those in favor?
Unanimous.